Uh, March sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Commission meeting. Well, first item up is Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner.
Do you need us in that?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America. And to the three hundred and forty eight states. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alrighty. The agenda good, Annalisa?
Yes, um, there was on the minutes that I need to get a parcel, a date, some parcel information, so I do not have those ready for you to approve.
Okay, I'll make a motion to be set the agenda for March sixth. Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, moving second, the agenda be set for our meeting today, March sixth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First up on the agenda, Clayton Webb. Come on up if you want, I'm old. Have a seat. You two state your names and for the record and tell us why you're, why you're here.
Clayton Jean Webb.
Mo Jackson.
Uh, what we have is, uh, I was down at the, the, Smith and Edwards and a, a guy noticed that I had a, a hat on. And, this is a, a medal. I don't do get good with these things. But, uh, here's a,
Yeah, maybe give me card.
Yeah. This guy gave me, these cards. Oh yeah, that's right. Um, anyway, it's for a victory medal. Um, for the veterans here in, uh, Rich County. And, as we talked, we thought it would be good to, uh, um, have a ceremony right there at the Rich County Fair. And we're kinda asking for a position, uh, uh, time slot that we can have, um, during the fair and the rodeo and.
When is the fair?
Uh, third weekend in August.
Nineteenth?
Let me look.
Nineteenth to twenty-eighth?
I think so.
Anyway, um, we've.
Fifteenth to seventeenth.
We would like to, uh, have it right after the, the, um.
Parade?
Parade.
No, parade at five o'clock, then it'd be too late.
It'd be too late.
Probably I need it at one o'clock.
So, um, the.
After the cash sale.
The four H sale would be from probably eleven to one thirty. And then they do the fish deal right after that, right? But we could do that.
Right after that?
Yeah. Maybe right before the parade, so maybe two o'clock.
Yep.
Yep.
Probably have to have somebody set up some chairs out here.
Do it out front here?
Yeah.
Oh, by the.
By this.
By the monument?
Yeah.
Uh, here, here's kind of the spill here. It says, uh, we would like to recognize our Utah veterans who served between September, uh, second nineteen forty-five and nineteen, uh, twenty-sixth of December nineteen ninety-one. Our mission is that those veterans and/or their families are awarded the Utah Cold War Victory Medal. This is no cost to the veteran. And all medals are paid by, for by donations from individuals and contribut-
Charitable.
Charitable organizations. We are a nonprofit organization. And so we're not asking for anything for, from the county or that, just a s- space that we can.
Need about thirty?
Probably thirty.
Why don't, why don't you set it up then? Um, let's do it on the seventeenth, which would be Saturday at two thirty and we'll, um, we'll coordinate getting you some chairs set up out there and, uh, I don't know, maybe we, probably even might need a, uh, you know, a portable sound system as well. I don't know exactly what, what they wanna do, but hopefully that that would be, I think that's a great opportunity to do that and.
Usually there's a sound system more for the parade, isn't there?
Um, yeah, could be, yeah.
We could get a smaller one that's easier to set up. I, I have one they could borrow. How many veterans do you anticipate?
Um, where's the?
About twenty-nine or thirty?
Yeah, thirty probably.
That's awesome. So that says and/or their families, is that including?
Right.
Those that have passed away and their families are still here?
Yeah. We, uh, like, we'll just take Roger Tilford for instance. Um, I know Hank would be here and probably Darlene. But one of them would probably get the medal for Roger, cause he's passed. Um, me and Mo already have gone over and gave Tom Britton his, cause he's not doing very well. But, um, we can have, uh, the, um, five news or two new, two news come up and, uh, cover some of it if you think that would be appropriate. I don't know. I, I don't know nothing about any of this other than I, I, I got kinda rustled into this and I said, yeah, we would like to do it, that's.
Sure, we would too.
Yeah, I think we can probably make some comment or some, uh, contact with some of the news people and, if nothing else, um, give them some information, um, from the, from the presentations or maybe the. So I, uh, I don't think there's any issue. We'll just put that on the agenda for the fair and, uh, I, you know, we'll just, that'll be part of the, the program that they'll do for Memorial Presentation, uh, Cold War Victory Medal Presentation, um, in front of their house at two thirty. Will that work for you guys? And you guys will take care of notifying families or whatever.
Okay, and gathering up those?
Yeah, nope. This guy's already at me on how many we need and how many this and that, so.
Perfect.
I'm gonna have to get a letter wrote up and put it on the post office.
And then I guess you get one, they get one of these too probably, huh?
Yes, they get, so that's, that's a certificate of.
Yeah. Of recognition, that's awesome.
Yeah. I think that's a good thing. That'll be a great part of the fair. Absolutely.
Like for me, I've never had no recognition since Korean War.
Oh.
That's what I was in.
Good.
Yeah, it's past due. Yep. Need somebody to start it and spearhead it and get the ball rolling and we'll, everybody's willing to help out.
Yep.
For sure. So, appreciate it. Thank, thanks for bringing this up.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll, uh,
Thank you.
We'll make sure we get it, get it on our agenda for the fair.
Well.
Okay. Blair Stringham. Come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
Appreciate the opportunity. Let me come to present our Pilt Payment Today. So, I'm Blair Stringham with the Division Wildlife Resources. I'm Northern Region Supervisor, so I'm out of our Ogden Office, um, and replaced Ben Nadolsky. I don't know if you, we're familiar with him, so he's now the Ogden Mayor, so. Um, I've been in this position for four or five months now. I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know I'm here and available. Um, if you have any challenges with wildlife in the county or just wanna chat about it, I'm happy to help or have our staff help as well, so. Um, I'll be there in our Ogden Office. Also, for our Pilt Payment Today, so we're delivering one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, and this is so the payment in lieu of taxes for our properties that we have here in the county. Um, we have two properties we manage. Um, those are Swan Creek and Woodruff Co-op. So Woodruff's about three thousand acres down here to the south. And we jointly manage it with, uh, BLM. It's primarily big game winter range and pronghorn animal habitat. And we also have Swan Creek that's up by Garden City, which is access to the Forest Service and a good winter range as well, so. Um, this payment today I can present to you, it's largely made up from license sales and permit sales from hunters and anglers, so our properties, we try to manage as such to be valuable wildlife or habitat, um, access for hunters and anglers, as well as try to pull animals onto those properties to mitigate for depredation and issues like that, so. Um, we appreciate your partnership and again, reach out if you have any problems or questions over the next year, we'd be happy to help.
Okay, appreciate it. So, I seen a helicopter up on Lake Town Canyon.
Mm-hmm.
Is that you guys?
Yeah.
Like a week ago or something?
Last Saturday.
Was it? Yeah, so we catch deer up there. A lot of our deer on the cache come off in winter in that area. Um, we put GPS collars on them and then watch where they go. Um, it helps us get survival data, so we know how many we lose during the winter, um, like winters like last year where we see we lose a bunch. Helps us adjust permit numbers and manage accordingly, so.
So that GPS collar showed that it was down on my lawn.
Oh, really?
Last night.
Huh.
Collar, couple of collared ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Down in town, Lake Town.
In Lake Town? Yeah, they like to drop down into there when their snow gets a little deeper and we see them gravitate towards some of the green areas in the summer and, and usually by about March or so, or May or so, usually they're heading back up on the mountain for the most part, but.
Yeah.
So, so Blair, going back to last winter, um, um, have you guys, I, I guess by now you've done your counts and have estimates of how much, what the losses were and those kind of things, um. Also, um, one of the things that we, we like to kind of keep a, a thumb on is, um, I shouldn't say a thumb, but it's, the information's good, is how many coyotes for, for depredation has been taken.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, so we've asked in the past if, if we, if we could get an email with those numbers, so we just have those in front of us and we know, you know, um, cause there's lots of times, you know, where, where in conversations where we speak about, you know, how much was actually lost or how much wasn't and those kind of things and, and if we had the actual numbers, it's helpful rather than just make a guess of, you know, well, the winter was awful and I, there was a ninety percent loss. Well, maybe there was, maybe there wasn't, but what did the numbers really say?
Yeah, we'd be happy to share that with you.
If you wouldn't find email and that to us, so we just have that information.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, definitely can send you that. We've got mostly deer. We do have some pronghorn and there are some elk that we also have information for as well, so I'll send you everything we have for Rich County.
And maybe also, um, how many animals were taken or how many tags were given for depredation of, of elk, for example, in, within the county, so we can say, you know, that, you know, I mean, cause everybody's saying, oh, we're being overrun with this or that or the other, and we could say, well, this is how many, how many was actually taken, and so we have those, those numbers of what you guys actually did versus, you know, somebody throwing number out there, so.
Okay, yeah, we can send you just the list of information we have for the county and what we're doing.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, great. Okay.
So did you relocate and locate in to Rich County?
Um, we had plans to, so our Parker Mountain herd, um, down in Wayne County usually is busting at the seams. Um, we've had challenges down there with just snow, so it's largely driven by the animals moving to lower evasions, then we can push it into a trap. Um, snow conditions down there just haven't been great, so we haven't been able to catch any, but we do have plans to bring some back. They were particularly hard hit this last year. We lost quite a few by the end of the winter, so.
And you're gonna relocate them out of Wyoming, right?
Uh, nope, they'll be here in Utah, but we'll put them as close to the border if you want and avoid anybody's ag land.
Well, you can load them in Utah, just, you know, head them in the direction, let them out in the trailer, so it's headed to Wyoming.
When we unload our cows, we face them where we want them to go, so just remember how to do that.
Okay, I will say with wildlife, it's a little more tricky. They just kinda tend to go wherever, but.
Where the grass is.
Yeah.
From water.
Yeah, no, that's good advice. We'll keep that in mind.
Okay, anything else?
He's probably got something for you to sign there that says he actually brought that.
I don't, but it's, it's small enough that they don't have too many concerns and will still it, but.
They trust that you're with it, huh?
Yeah, but I'll present that to you.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate your partnerships and reach out if you ever have questions or concerns.
Yeah, if you just get us that information, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for driving up.
Good to meet you. We'll be talking. Um, also, maybe in, maybe, um, one of the, if, one of the, um, curious things I was, is how much we actually fed deer last year. How many, how many tons of, I don't know, you have that?
We do. It was pretty big endeavor. I think we fed through May or so and in several areas, so I'll get that information ported here as well.
Yeah, I know, I know. We talked about how many areas that they had throughout the county and I just was curious how much we actually fed.
Yeah, it was pretty significant, so, yeah, I'll share that with you.
Yeah.
We've got some data too of survival, so we ended up collaring some of the animals that were on those feed rows and just to kinda see if it did and if it won't survive it on, it did to some extent, so.
Good.
I'll pull that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Deborah Vanoy and Brian Nelson. Come on up. Utah Ag Land Trust. You got one we used to. Did you come through Logan Village?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I want that one. You want me to use this? I just need an extended.
You know what, I don't know, I'm a wonder, I'm two, but. That's a beautiful day out here today.
Yeah.
Nice weather.
Finally. Two days ago, we had about a nine hundred mile an hour wind and snow and.
Nine hundred mile?
Yes.
Really?
Literally?
No, but yes. Seemed like it.
That's unheard of if it was nine hundred, but it seemed like it.
I may exaggerate those.
Are you known to exaggerate?
Yeah.
Yeah, Simon usually exaggerates over a million times.
Okay.
Uh, the Utah Presentation. I need a short form.
Short form.
Does it have two twenty-two? Does this say it right here? Or is the title?
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Presentation, short form.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah.
What do we do on my end? I haven't shared on this computer. We just need to turn that on there.
Brian, can you, you're good at this. I'm not either.
Do you want me to do it?
She needs to share this with the computer. I mean, with the, it's gonna be longer.
Are you looking for the remote?
Yeah.
If any of you didn't have a remote, it wouldn't be the end of the world.
There's some buttons. But. It's usually just right here.
Did any of you attend the, uh, American Farm Bureau Conference in Salt Lake?
I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah. It was a good, good convention.
I don't see. How many buttons on there?
You know, another alternative is a laptop just sat right here, so that could be a, that could be an option as well.
Maybe this, did you find a power button?
There it is.
Find a power button, we gotta, let's see.
There you go.
Problem is, it's getting near.
Near, is that the fifth one over nearing it? Uh, Brian, see how it's like a.
Thumb drive over there.
Uh, no, this guy right here. This, that's me right there.
Here it is. Tell him that. That's it?
Yeah.
Can you see?
Go ahead. Just plug, do, do it.
No, just show that I have no clue on that.
Do, do input. Okay, we'll go source. Okay, we're on. Okay, we're going in two.
Say what number?
No.
Okay, one, there we go. Which do you mind? It's on three, Bill.
It's on three?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the second channel. Just slide it over.
Okay. There you go. Slowly settings. Hold up, sorry folks.
Is it the one on the bottom? Is that the P? There we go. Do you want my stand? And I've got some materials for you. I can share with you later. Thanks so much for being here today. Um, will you be clicking over?
I can.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate the time. We are an agricultural-based land trust founded in March of two thousand twenty-three. We focus primarily on agricultural lands and we are, uh, intent on giving ag landowners an option. For those ag landowners who want to sell to developers, that is their right in this country to do so. But for those who want to stay in agriculture, who want to continue generational farming and ranching, uh, conservation easement placed on the property is an option for them. And so this is something that we're gonna be talking about today. Um, it selectively reduces, uh, removes certain uses on the property. What we are primarily dealing with in Utah, especially along Wasatch Front area, Voselka Cache, uh, even, uh, Utah County and then your areas even on the other side of the Wasatch Mountains, is, uh, development that's occurring, that's spreading throughout our state. And that is the use that would be limited when the conservation easement is put in place. We would, um, the easement restricts building subdivisions or commercial developments on, on ag property. And the, um, the agreements are individually tailored for the needs of the owner. Uh, these are voluntary easements that are put in place. They're not anything that's mandated. Um, it's the wish of the property owner to go forward with something like this. We, as a land trust, are the entity that, uh, does the monitoring and stewardship for the easement once it's in place. And, uh, we, we derive much of our funding from federal sources, uh, USDA's NRCS, from, um, Lee Ray McAllister Fund, from some of the county open space funds. In the densely populated areas, there is the, uh, there is an interest, Cache has one, uh, Summit County, Wasatch County, and I've got a feeling that Utah County is gonna be, um, going forward with a, with a petition to see if their, if their citizens would be willing to, to, uh, float a bond for an open space, uh, fund in their county, because they feel the pressure of the development. You can stay back if you don't mind. It protects the conservation, uh, values on the property. A conservation value includes agricultural uses on the property. Other conservation and in addition to agricultural use, open space. So that is a visual, um, gift to people, to the public, to see that open space being used for agriculture. And so that is a public benefit. Uh, other conservation va- values might be, you know, wetland protection, um, wildlife protection. And a- a- as we, um, as we know to many people, uh, agriculture protection is wildlife protection, because you have the ability up for migration routes to be on private ag properties, so, um, there is a great deal of conservation value in agriculture. It is generally perpetual in nature, especially if you're getting funding from the federal government. The NRCS, uh, dollars require that the, uh, easement be a perpetual easement. Now, can we defend it in six hundred years? I don't know. But there are castles in Europe that are still owned by the same family, six hundred years later. And that's a positive for the idea of holding that land in a family's, um, trust for, to per- to perpetuity. And it runs with the land. It's binding on all future owners. The ag landowner who puts an easement on his property can then sell the land for ag value. And the value is gonna be less than development value. He will sell it to a conservation buyer. They exist. They just want it to stay open. They're not necessarily farmers. They might, um, allow farmers to come and farm on the land, but they own the property and they wanna keep it as a, as open space. Um, or he can, um, he can pass it on to his children, grandchildren, and they can sell it. They're never limited in their ability to, to, uh, sell that land. They always have c'title to that land. And then it can be sold for ag land use. The land trust owns the easement. We never own the land, ever. But we own the easement and we can defend that easement. And if, if in the future, uh, actions are taken that, that, um, are not in alignment with the agreement that both parties agree to, then we can take legal action. And that's kinda how that works.
So, just a question. So, let's say a piece of property goes into a conservation easement. And the person that purchased that with the easement on it.
You please, yeah.
Yes, so, let's say they don't do anything aggravated on that piece of property. So how is that piece of property taxed? Does it automatically be entered at green belt exemption?
Good question. Um, um, that's what that new owner needs to, needs to look at, and it may not be. Because he's not doing any ag on it, it has an easement on it for conservation, but no ag is being done, so they would probably be taxed at, at, uh, ordinary tax rates.
But would those ordinary tax rates go back to the development value of that piece of property?
I don't know. I do not know.
Yeah, there almost needs to be a conservation easement tax rate.
Can you write that down, Brian?
Huh?
Write that question down, so we can figure that out. Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know. So it would make sense for him to let someone farm.
Well, the reason I.
Or put cattle on the property.
Yeah, the reason I ask that is because we're seeing, you know, we're seeing situations where, uh, a, a conservation easement was put on. And then the person that owned the property sold it to someone else and they, the only thing they wanted to do is wildlife on it, just use it for hunting value. And hunting is not.
Greed belt.
Yes, it is not a greed, it does not, it's not an agricultural issue. So, does that, that's what I'm saying. So if they're just gonna hunt on it, there's no agricultural use on that piece of property, where does that put the taxes?
We'll find out, and we'll get back to you on that. Yeah. That's a lot, a lot of that's being done in Texas, actually, but I don't know about their green belt laws in Texas.
They don't do green belt.
I don't think so, but a lot of wildlife, especially exotic wildlife is being done on ag properties. Let's put an easement, yeah. Uh, it limits the future nonuses, but encourages ag enterprises. It permits. It permits construction of new buildings on the property, you just have to come to an agreement with both parties, the owner and the land trust, on what that building envelope is going to look like. It's ju- for NRCS applications, um, it's usually about two percent of the property size. It can be new construction for a home for the family. It can be, the building envelope can include homes for the adult children, as we see, new ag buildings. But we'd like to have an established building envelope when we go into final agreement on the, on the easement. Um. It does not require public access, it can remain private, because again, the public has that visual view, that public, that, that visual benefit, so, so they're, they're getting a benefit from that. Um, it does not provide immunity from eminent domain. So in the event, in the event that the, uh, government exercises eminent domain, we can't defend against them. Uh, it can be terminated, but only in rare circumstances. It has strong, strong standing. So you might want to terminate it, but the land trust will say, we have a perpetual agreement, you received a lot of money from the NRCS for this easement and we, we will probably take legal action if you seek to terminate it. Okay, please. Okay, it protects natu- natural and ecological resources, it protects historical resources. Um, you know, more and more, uh, even the structures on our ag properties are of value. And we are, we are realizing in Cache Valley that our barns, um, may, may qualify for, uh, open space funding for renovation because of their public value. If that land, if that ag land stays ag and you've got these beautiful structures on the property, they need to be restored and, and, um, be allowed to, to stand much longer. Let me go forward, please. So, looking at Rich County, your agricultural profile, based on, um, USDA, um, two thousand seventeen census, this is probably a little dated, but that's the latest I've got. Uh, beef cattle appears to be, uh, the, the strongest livestock, uh, component in the, in the county, the pasture, and I'm making up a large part of the ag use. The average age of the producer, fifty-five years of age, that's not ancient, it's not eighty, you know? It's a good, a good age and we hope that the young are coming up and wanting to continue to do agriculture in Rich County, so it has the.
I think, uh, over the nation, I think that's, that's young compared to the average overall. I think that's like ten years.
Seems to me.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think Farm Bureau come out with a, the average age of the, of, both, well, just agriculture itself was like sixty-two or sixty-three years old. I mean, it was quite surprising.
I maybe, um, there is this stat rolling around that says in the next twenty-five years, eleven millions, a million acres of ag land could be lost in America. Because it would be developed and there was no one to take over or have interest. However, we're seeing an upswell of interest among young people in, in being outdoors, doing agriculture, even on a smaller scale. There are people in more urban areas that want to take six acres and put organic produce on it and this type of thing, very different from what an operation, what an operation out here looks like. But still, nevertheless, there's an interest in it. Um, as they say, uh, what was once old is new again. These young people don't realize that, that this kind of farming was, was once, uh, the way, the small-scale farmer, uh, with cattle and crops and, and fertilizing with the, with, with, what they generated on the property. So, does, uh, does your ag land qualify? If it's a significant farming operation, it does, and I'm going to go into something that shows you the tax benefits to the ag landowner if he decides to donate a portion of the, of the easement. They're very, uh, significant. Title is clean and clear, uh, the property is free from harmful chemicals, no dumping on the property. Um, and then property boundary disputes, uh, they would all be cleared up, not have a problem. This is a real typical wish list for NRCS applications. They have a lot of money, NRCS has a lot of funding for conservation easements right now, through a national program and then through the ACEP program. They really do want to help ag landowners hang on to their property and continue viable farming and ranching. Benefits to the farmer and rancher, um, the development rights are sold. So, they, uh, the property now has ag value only, once an easement's placed on it. How is, um, the value of the conservation easement determined? An independent appraiser, and there are a handful of them in Utah that are experienced in conservation easements, does a before, um, value, developable value, and he does a ag value. And the value in the middle is the conservation value. So let's say, uh, developable value on, on acreage in Rich County, close to the lake, is ten million dollars. A developer would pay ten million dollars for that land. The, um, appraiser would then say the ag value for that land, it's productive ranchland and beef cattle, um, say he gets, it's seven million dollars for that, for the ag value on that property. That three million dollars is the conservation easement value. No more complicated than that. That is what, uh, we have to come up with, or a portion that perhaps the, uh, landowner donates back to the land trust, that becomes an asset on our books. And I'll show you how that works in a moment. So basically, we're paying the landowner to sell their development rights, you know the term? And, and in that case, it's three million dollars. NRCS would come up with half of that if they found this to be a viable property. And if it had special grasses on it, they would, they could pay up to seventy-five percent of the, um, of the easement value. But they would expect, and this is the only time they would expect any control. If they're paying seventy-five percent of the easement value for special natural grasslands, grasses that you have on that ranch land, they want you to remain in that. So you can't till it up or change, change the grasses after you've gotten the money from them. And that's only fair. There are no other terms under which NRCS controls what you do with your ag land. There are some, there are some, you know, thoughts out there that, um, once you put your land on a conservation easement, the government controls your land. Um, that is not true. That is the one case, and they've paid almost the entire easement value, that is their right to say, we want you to stay in those natural grasslands, because they want to restore them. But other than that, uh, an ag landowner controls the use of his ag lands.
So when you say s- uh, special grasses, are you referring to like native species or?
Yes, yes, yes. That, the grasses have, we, the, the government fields have been, um, lost. Yeah. I can go forward. Okay, let me give you a little, uh, example of a financial model here. Uh, we talked ten and seven, and that gave us a three million dollar. The developable on this is two point seven, the undevelopable is one point five million, so the easement value is one point two million. Simple, 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 okay? And there we are, there's my second one.
And that makes sense because if they wanted to go sell that ag value, they, they could still sell it for the one point five million dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, go forward. Now, um. Say NRCS comes in for one point five of the three million, then one point five needs to be raised by us or donated back by the landowner. Or a combination, because that combination, if he donates back half a million, that's going to, um, ease his tax burden on the million. Okay, see how that goes? Right, so a lot of times there is a donation back of part, part of the easement and the land trust still has to come up with some funding to the landowner. So he's got one point five from NRCS and he might get one, one million from the land trust or whatever, however that gets negotiated. It's fifty percent of the adjusted gross income is deducted from federal taxes for fifteen years for non-ag landowners. For an ag landowner, a hundred percent of the adjusted gross income, their adjusted gross income is deductible for fifteen years to the amount of the conservation easement value. Or to, to the amount of their deduction, I should say, I'm sorry. So this kind of shows you, this family, um, had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in adjusted gross income and on the fifty percent level, they were able to deduct seventy-five thousand each year going forward to fifteen years to one point two million dollars. Now, if it's, if the deduct, if the, um, donated portion is reached at nine years, it goes to nine years, the, the, the value of the deduction. But if that were a hundred percent, they would be able to deduct a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as an ag landowner. So it's very generous. And that is because that landowner is taking the development rights away from themselves, the ability to sell that land and turn it into development. So the, the federal government is saying, here's a very generous tax deduction for you. Okay. So this is an example of an actual case in, um, in Wasatch County. Fifty-seven acres in Heber Valley was, uh, excuse me, in, in Summit County. Fifty-seven acres was put in a conservation easement, the value of the easement was almost four million dollars. I actually don't know the numbers of the developable and the ag value, but we're talking about a very densely populated area now, or becoming more so. If you've ever driven down Pass Morgan into Summit, the growth is really remarkable. The Wasatch County Open Space Fund don't, uh, provided almost eight hundred thousand to the, uh, payment to the landowner. Utah Open Lands, a very noted, a land trust in Utah, provided almost two million dollars to the landowner. So he was able to, it's the, you know, two, two point five million dollars into his pocket, but he donated back one point one million to the land trust of the easement value. And that, as I mentioned, goes, is an asset on our books. That donation helped offset the taxes on the two point five million, okay? That just gives you an ID, yeah, it's called a combined, it's combined funding, it's also called a bargain sale. Okay? Same thing, they're a market ten million, ag value seven million, conservation easement value three million. Um. The co- uh, minus the, um, one point seven million paid to the landowner and part of that is the RCS and then he donated, uh, one point three million and that provides a ca- uh, de- um, deduction on capital gains, again, with that illustration. So the benefits, the ag land remains productive livestock and cropland. That is something that NRCS wants to see, um, advocates for farming and ranching want to see, environmentalists want to see. I mean, we're, we're, and I'm not one, I'm more of a ag landowner, my heritage is agriculture from Montana. Um, but it, um, checks off lots of boxes that are very favorable. Uh, natural resources are supported, the groundwater, the aquifers, um, stayed, uh, filled, carbon sequestration, dirty, polluting air gets, uh, sequestered into the, into the ground and then wildlife preservation. A lot of times you'll have the Mule Deer Foundation fund conservation easements on ag property because of the benefit for wildlife. And another thing we don't really want to see is ranchettes, which you might find, uh, occurring out here. They're occurring all over. What ends up happening is these five-acre ranchettes get fenced and that's very bad for wildlife. They, it, it really hinders their ability to migrate and move around. Of course, uh, Utah has a strong, um, cultural and historical agriculture, um, component that we don't want to lose, the pioneers. And, and many of these farms in, in Utah are still owned by families that are third, fourth generations and we want to help them keep them in, in the properties if they choose to. Let me go forward. So, um, we provide an introduction packet, we enter into an agreement with, with the, uh, with the ag landowner, Brian, myself go out and seize the property. We talk with NRCS, we ask them what their thoughts on that property. They want to see how title looks, they want to see surveys, uh, make sure that everything looks pretty clean on it. Uh, the property gets appraised by an independent appraiser. You know, this process is, takes time and it takes money. The appraiser is going to run between eight and ten thousand dollars. And that has to be done right out the gate, we need to kind of know what the conservation value is. That's paid for by the ag landowner. The whole process can be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range to close it. And it takes, um, eighteen to twenty-four months to complete a conservation easement. But it gets, we get there, okay? And that's my grandfather, he was a, a dry farmer in northern Montana, he ranched and farmed and he's my inspiration, um, for trying to save agriculture in the western states. We're all feeling a threat and we're doing everything we can to protect the ag lands for those ag landowners who are protected.
So you're related to our NFL football player, Kyle Van Noy?
No, I'm not, uh, my husband, uh, would be distantly related to the Van Noy family. Kyle was adopted and, uh, they're in, what, they're in eastern Wyoming, right?
I don't know, I just knew he went to college there.
Yeah, yeah, he, he grew up in, uh, is it Cheyenne, over on the east side, Cheyenne, Wyoming?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we could be, there are a lot of Van Noy's in Sky Valley and, um, my husband's father was, um, Jay Van Noy in Cache County.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I can leave these with you gentlemen, um. I don't know if I can, I've got a couple of brochures as well. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. If there's ever a need or an interest in having us come out, uh, to speak to the ag landowners in the community, uh, guess I need to know what your state's area is too, if we might want to come out and have a group, or your county here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's August, usually the second week or third week.
Okay. Yeah, that's all it is, it's somewhat complicated from a financial standpoint. Of course, the ag landowner has an attorney and an accountant, um, uh, representing them and guiding them. And like any real estate type of a deal, everyone is together at closing. Uh, no one is signing anything that they don't want to sign. And if, if there are terms that they don't agree with, then they shouldn't sign it. So everyone feels like it's very, very, um, clear and understandable.
Seems like this is, I seen, uh, knew about this when it first started and it looks like it's getting, you're getting it fine-tuned.
Mm-hmm.
Quite a bit from when it first came out.
Yes.
We have about ten thousand acres in conservation easements here in Rich County.
Good, good to know. Good to know. Um, I, the development going on at Bear Lake must be concerning. Uh, when, you know, I don't know if developers are coming out and talking to landowners or if you're getting letter, a letter per week, um, about, about the sale of the property.
Well, in the Bear Lake area, you know, ninety percent of that is, is, you know, smaller, smaller parcels that developers have bought and, you know, it's all speculation, I mean, you know, of either reselling it for a higher price or actually doing the development.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it's, it's slowly diminishing to the point of where the good share of the property around the lake over there and the gardens and the areas is owned by developers.
Yeah.
With the development interest.
And then you've got the east side of the, I mean, the, yeah, the east side of the lake too, that's growing great guns.
There is a, uh, a property owner on the east side of the lake that I know for the last ten years has been trying to figure out how to do a conservation easement on their, their family.
Is it Wyoming or is it Utah?
No, it's a Utah, right on the east side of the lake.
Yeah, well, I'd love to talk to them, you might, uh, let them know that we exist and we could, we, we certainly would be interested in talking to them.
Okay, I, they were really interested four or five years ago. And they were going through the steps of the NRCS, so.
They have?
They're aware, yeah, they're aware.
Okay, well then, and then NRCS will direct ag landowners to us or to the other, uh, land trusts, because we are the entity, NRCS sort of needs us, we're the, we're the monitoring. We go out to property annually to monitor the easement and, and, and just make sure that things look as they looked when we, uh, closed the deal. It's usually a very workable arrangement, nothing's changed. But, you know, then you get into next generations and that's where it can get a little complicated. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we thank you so much, we really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
Have a safe trip back.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for driving over.
Absolutely. Yeah, nice to meet you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you, Brian.
Likewise.
And if you, uh, I don't know, I'd like, if you research this thing about, about greenbelt and taxes and those type of things, I, it would be good to know about how that works.
We will, yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
Because there's, you know, there's some real pressure, um, and, you know, one of the things is, is there's been two or three state, state sections that have been bought from the truck. And, you know, one of the things is is there's been two or three state state sections that have been bought from the trust lands. That have been bought solely just for wildlife. And they plan on putting it in a conservation easement so that it will be that way. But when they do that, then at that point in time, they're they plan on fencing it or will you fence it and there'll be no more agricultural grazing on top of that. It's just only wildlife, so we need to kind of figure that out.
That would be a good topic for an article, answering that question about the tax issue, yeah, we'll we'll look into it. Okay, okay.
Okay, Kim?
Kim Wilson, Rich County Assessor, have all these personal property exemptions. I'll leave them and let you guys go through them.
Okay.
I have the exemptions for the church, the Boy Scouts, and the Health West, which is the Bear Lake Community Health Center. I have those that need approval.
So this is just the same as the as it was when it was the Health Clinic Bear Lake Health?
Pretty much, yeah, they've they've applied for the first time, so they've got all the documentation, it looks like, all attached. I kind of breezed through it and just looked at it real quick, but it looked like they had all the stuff there, had it all cleaned in there. And then these other two were just continued exemptions because they've had them in the past.
Well, these ones are pretty easy, I'll make a motion that we accept the exemptions for the for the three, yeah, this one's a hard one. Health West, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and Crossroads of the West for the personal property tax exemption.
Okay.
I I did that, yeah.
Yeah.
Church of Jesus Christ.
And and that's for the real property too.
For the real property, yes, exemption. And then we'll look at those other ones later and do a separate motion.
So you call them real property exemptions?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moving second that we approve the tax exemptions. The three mentioned as presented by our assessor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then I'll let you guys handle those in the meantime. The last thing I have is Willard Schultz. And he was one that appealed during Board of Equalization and Kaya kind of went back and went into it, tried to look at it a little bit more. She found this survey for this subdivision, this is the little Switzerland kind of area. So here's Little Switzerland here and then this is the, I can't remember what the name of this subdivision is right here, but it's up Swan Creek. So she found this, they had surveyed this line along here, so they basically surveyed that, but they surveyed surveyed this line coming in. And it looks like the Schultz property comes down intentionally, hits the road right here to where they would have access through right here. They would have to put in a, like a bridge or something to get across there, crossing. But it looks like, based on this survey, that it they would have access off the main road right there.
They they do.
So, anyway, we need to bring that back and he had appealed based on, he didn't think it had access at all. So I guess at this point we need to know whether, I don't I don't recommend any changes to the value of his property at this point in time. Because he has access and his appeal was based on the fact that he didn't have access, that it was landlocked. And according to the, this survey here shows that they do have access as far as we can tell. So I guess I need a motion to to reopen the board to not buy or to deny or to what's the word I'm looking for?
Well, to divide, to deny the valuation.
Denied the appeal or to not deny it, but to rule that it's
Keep it how it is.
Keep it how it is, yeah, leave the leave the value the same instead of trying to reduce the value.
I know there's an issue there because he felt like, he said, well, in order to access my property, you know, I've got to, I've got to
Bridge or culvert?
Yeah, bridge or culvert and that's going to cost me a lot of money, so I really don't have any access, but, you know.
He does have access, it's up to him whether to put in a culvert or a bridge or whatever. But and that's that's a non-issue as far as the value's concerned, as far as I'm concerned with
So so this is?
This is, this is a while ago when they did this, so the ownership, these ownership things have changed according to Kaya.
Okay, so are they have they changed to to this guy?
The Willard Schultz, I believe this is his property right here that comes down.
Okay.
Is what, from what Kaya told me, now she's, you know, obviously she's the recorder. And that's who I have, she researched this out so that it comes down and everything matches except it jogs, intentionally jogs into the roadway right here. Based on this survey.
Because we had this person in here saying that he had no access to his property because the canal or that, yeah, Swan Creek was there.
Yeah.
And that he virtually had no access, you know, unless he put a bridge or a culvert in and that was going to cost a lot of money, so he didn't have access. But, you know, he come in and appealed for, I don't know, it's been four or five years ago about the access. So I know, you know, if they bought this, that, you know.
Well, and like I said, I I've just gone off what Kaya told me as the recorder, that this looks like the, that, you know, that this line has been surveyed. And this is where it jogs across right there and then comes back up around there. And that was surveyed with this deal. So other than that, I don't know, and this was done in two thousand and eight, so. But as far as anything else, that's what the recorder told me. And so that's all I have to go off of at this point in time. So my recommendation is to, it's not disma deny or dismiss, but to no change, there there'd be no change on the on the valuation of the property for the two thousand and twenty-three tax year.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second.
Okay, it's moving second that we stay with the original taxation. The assessors presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so I will do a B O E letter for him. And then he'll have thirty days to appeal like the normal, but it just took us a little while to get this sorted out and
And you'll mention that that's what we found and
Yeah.
To back it.
Thanks for doing the work on that, that's a lot of legwork.
Well, like I said, Kaya did a lot of it because a lot of it was it was dependent on what was filed in her office. But after after a lot of work on her part, then that's kind of what we figured are all these here.
All right, that's all I have, gentlemen, except for these, when you'll when you get a minute.
All right, we'll do them, yeah.
And then if you'll just approve them or if you have questions, come grab me and I can explain whatever, so. Anything else you have for me?
Nope, we're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob? You're not going to bring your boss up with you?
Yeah.
How you doing?
Good.
Thanks, commissioners. I have a hard copy, I think electronic copy was sent to you if you'd like one.
Thank you.
Bill, you want one?
He's probably been through it, huh?
Yeah.
Hundred times?
So I'm Rob Johnson, the Chief Financial Officer at Bear Mental Health. And state code requires that each year, the local authorities, the mental health authorities have a chance to go over the audit with the officers of the corporation. And I'm here to fulfill that requirement. On page five, which is the first sheet under the introductory section, it's, I mean, under the financial section. Doesn't have an actual five on it, but this is the independent auditor's report. And in that second paragraph on page five, the auditor stated, in our in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of Bear River Mental Health Services, Inc. as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-two. And the changes in its net assets and its cash flows for the years then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So they're just stating that it was a clean report. And then if you'll go to the last two pages in the audit. This is their report on internal control and other matters. And if you go down to that last paragraph on the second of the last page. Down there in that last sentence, this is during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. And then on the last page, in the second last paragraph, that last sentence, the results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. So once again, just stating they didn't see any internal control problems or any other items as they went through the the information. Just do kind of a high level walkthrough of some of the financial stuff on page eight. And then after I'm done, if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them. On page eight is the statement of financial position or our balance sheet. And if you go down to that second of the last line, you can see that the total net assets from twenty-two to twenty-three went up a little over two million from fourteen million three to sixteen million four. I'd like to point out one other line, kind of right in the middle under the liabilities and net assets, there's an unexpended county funds. So we're on July first to June thirtieth year and the counties are on a calendar year. So we're always asking for a budget before we know what the legislature is going to give us and what the twenty percent match is going to be. So if if the county's ever put in more than we need for our twenty percent match on the state. We put it on our balance sheet as an unexpended county fund, so if there's ever a year when you don't have enough in the budget for what the legislature has allocated to us, it can cover that shortfall till it's time to budget again. And so you can see that came down from eighty thousand down to sixty-two, but rich counties actually went up a little bit from twelve thousand one twenty to twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand five hundred. So then on to the next page, the statement of activities or our income statement. Third line down is the county amount. You can see that's come from four hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand and twenty-two to five hundred and four thousand in twenty-three. That's because there were some other state funds given. And I like to think of our our income as kind of an inverted pyramid. And the county money at the bottom of that really supports the entire, the entire pyramid. Because those monies match the state monies twenty percent and then those state and county funnies, state and county monies match the Medicaid money and allow us to draw down the Medicaid money to serve the people. So that five hundred and three thousand that the counties give us is critical. And it's the most important revenue that we have, because that's what we use to leverage the other money. That turns into a little over eighteen million dollars to support the community mental health in Cache Rich and Box Elder County. And we really appreciate the support that we've had over the years. You can see that the in that the total revenues there before the expenses is down slightly from the previous year. And the expenses are up, a little over a million dollars. So we went from a three point four million dol- three point almost four million dollar net income in twenty-two to just over two million in two thousand and twenty-three. If we flip to the next page, we break down the expenses a little bit more. The next page is twenty-three and the one before that's twenty-two and you can compare if you'd like to. But we're a service organization, you can see that our biggest expense by far is our personnel expense. And that's a little over seventy, it's about seventy-four and a half percent of our income. And you can see that our our management in general or our overheads just under ten percent. And then on page twelve is the statement of cash flows. Just shows that where the changes in came to increase our cash from eleven point two to thirteen point two million. So then there's a lot of notes to the financial statements, I won't go through those, but if you have any questions, I'd try and answer them.
Just one question, Rob, and I know this, but I just back here on page on page nine. So where we've got county, the county dollars of five hundred thousand, well, five hundred and four thousand basically. And then the state for the three point five million. So what's the four hundred thousand in federal dollars?
So the four hundred thousand in federal dollars, the majority of that is block grant funding. Yeah. There's other little federal plots that come through the division that we get, but that's the big piece of it is just block grant funding.
Does that have to be matched?
It does not. And it's interesting, the single audit level is at seven hundred and fifty thousand, used to be at a quarter of a million. And we've never been over that with federal funds, so we've we've never had to have a single audit. And that doesn't, you know, you look at that and you can see that five hundred and three is not exactly twenty percent of the state. Not all the state funds need to be matched either. If it doesn't come through the formula and get distributed based on population, then it doesn't need to be matched by the counties. So like the 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 M C O D or our Mobile Crisis Outreach Team, that money doesn't need to be matched because it's not based on a population. Yeah.
I have a quick question, so your investment income is almost half a million bucks, what was the change there?
The change is the is the rate that the P T I, the Public Treasurers Investment Fund is
Just over your money in those ideal funds?
Yeah, so so the cash amount hasn't gone up that much, but the rate went from under one percent to we've been earning, you know, at the end of the year, we were earning over five percent on that. So it really made a big difference in that.
It's just interest.
Yeah. It's just the interest and and the majority of that money, like I said, is in the Public Treasurers Investment Pool or Fund.
Yeah, because that's a huge amount.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have other investments besides the P T I?
We don't, we don't have any money, any, we used to decades ago had money in the local banks in certificates of deposit, but it was it was hard to track them all and keep them under the F D I C limit. We do, you know, we do go over that F D I C limit at Cash Valley Bank for during the first of the month when we're trying to make payroll and stuff. But we try and keep that under, so there is some money at Cash Valley Bank that, and they, we have a sweep account. And they keep it in a money market account that earns very close to what the Public Treasurers Investment, yeah. And they just sweep each day from there to cover what clears from our account.
Looks good.
Unless anybody's got any more questions, I'll make a motion that we accept the Bear River Mental Health financial audit.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to, on the table to accept the Bear River Mental Health budget, or not budget.
Audit.
Audit, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
And this is the certification that I came and presented.
Do you need all of us to sign that or?
Yeah, yeah, they want each member to sign it.
Can you sign for me?
I can't.
Yeah, you can.
I've seen that.
Squiggle, you know?
Yeah, I've seen that. I've seen the way he does and I, you know, maybe I could.
Think about it, that's a great electronic signature, John.
Yep.
Would you like a copy of that?
Yes, please.
Thanks again for your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Without those county dollars, we wouldn't have much of a budget.
How was the canyon?
You know, it wasn't horrible, a few slushy spots, but it was pretty, our way, going down, it looked pretty snow packed. But the plows must have hit that ascending part pretty good.
They had a heck of a night. They had two semi spun out in Jackknife and the road was blocked from like two o'clock until seven thirty. And it was, it was massive and it was blowing hard. Travel safely.
Hey, thank you.
See you. Okay, Travis?
Sir.
Come up and state your name and what's your?
Travis Taylor. I was here a little while ago on a rezone for a piece right up against the Idaho border. And we talked about fire, fire access and the length of the cul-de-sac there. And I heard this, it's kind of hard to see some measurements, but. Okay, so there's really, this top one here, the long skinny one, that's the one we rezoned. That blue line there with the eight hundred shows where the eight hundred foot cul-de-sac could come to. It's just not very far up in there, so it makes most of that unusable. So we've approached, Mitch had that letter, the comment letter from the folks that are the neighbors there and we've reached out to them and we're kind of trying to negotiate with them. Uh, but what I was wondering today is this, this road here. So that's your, that's the eight hundred feet, eight hundred foot measurement. You have this road here, which is a platted public road, dedicated road. And then there's this funny little strip here that is shown on the plat. So the end of that cul-de-sac is this right here. So the highway is way down here, you come up here and you got this funny little dedicated strip here that connects up onto this. And so you got the squiggly road here and you got that projection of the cul-de-sac hitting that switchback there. That switchback is right here. There's really no, there's no easement or anything, at least recorded on this. There might be one dedicated somewhere that actually connects that piece up. So this, this plat down here with the, with the extension, the public extension probably ends like right in there. And then you have this little, little gap right there that, you know, where it has to hit this. Anyway, it's basically a public road hitting into a private road. This one, this plat here with the switchback on it, you can see here, those dots mean that's the property core.
This isn't a public road.
It's, it's not a public, it's dedicated.
No, it is not dedicated. That's a, that's a private subdivision up through there. We did not plot, we did not plow that road, we did not maintain that road.
Oh, okay. Okay.
No, that is, that is, that is a private road.
Interesting.
We, we forced him from this cul-de-sac that was part of the deal was to connect these two roads for them to have an emergency access out of there.
Okay.
So there was supposed to be a deed of easement through there for that road. And he did not put it in when he put the cul-de-sac or when he put the subdivision in. And we, that was part of the, that was part of the agreement was he would connect these two for an emergency access. But that is a private road.
So this, this, this piece must be dedicated to an HOA or something then, instead of the public.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, it's not a public road.
Okay.
It's not.
So this guy, so which way did it go? This guy had to negotiate with these guys to tie him, or this guy had the problem and he had to tie on down here.
Well, the issue was is that these people, the only access they had was to go out into Idaho.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so they had one access. So when this was approved, if it was, yeah, anyway, they allowed this, this subdivision in, but the only access they had was to go out through.
Which was basically a cul-de-sac from right here.
Right, and they shut them off from having, and and what they really wanted to do was to shut this completely off and make them come up here. Well, this guy wouldn't agree to that because of the fact that that wasn't part of the plan. However, there was an issue. And and during the summertime, they have a dumpster right here and we access that dumpster through here. We did not during the winter, but during the summer, we accessed their garbage dumpster right there up this road. And we forced them to have this road as an emergency exit out of there and a garbage pickup for them up here.
Is this gated or is this just open?
It's gated, it is gated.
Emergency vehicle access only.
Emergency vehicle.
Warrior.
Yeah, and they have, it's locked. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the question that I had then, and I guess that's interesting. So if if I, if I build something, something up through here, I guess we could keep this private, but my first thought is we would make this public. But if I made this public all the way up through here and I I had a loop, you know, wherever it worked out down in here, I don't know, but we'd still want to reach up in here. Would this be public? I I would exceed obviously the eight hundred feet here, but would it still be okay to be public if I exceeded the eight hundred feet, had some kind of turnaround and had, was able to negotiate an access easement through here, kind of like this?
Well, the chances of us taking, taking the county on and making that a public road would be, I mean, that's, that's totally up, I guess, up to you. But at this point in time, most subdivisions keeping, are keeping their roads private because they want to limit the access of people up in there. That's why this is a private road and that's why these are private roads.
Is there, is there some, is there, I don't remember seeing a gate. How do they limit people's, people from driving up in there?
They don't.
They, they just can't because it's not public.
Oh, if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah. They could put a gate there, much like Swan Creek didn't used to have, and maybe you don't know where that is, but it's just a little bit further down the road right here, you could access Swan Creek. But those were all private, private roads and they have their own gate now. They went ahead and gated, which they can because they're all private roads.
So no big deal on the private road. It's still, the same cul-de-sac length limit applies whether it's public or private? Okay, but if it was private, you wouldn't care if, if I could negotiate here, 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 anywhere, it wouldn't really matter.
As long as you had an out.
Okay. All right. Well, easy enough. Uh, do you know who, who the contacts are for this and this?
So the subdivision up in Alcoa is, do you know who the?
No.
I, I don't, I don't know who the homeowner's president was. It was Kendrick for a while, but I don't think it's him anymore. This is Troy Peterson, Mike Mattson subdivision. And I, I, I guess it's still, I don't know, they've sold all their lots and they have their own homeowners association, but they're the ones that developed it and at one time both of it, well, one of them lived up in there, but he has sold his house. Troy doesn't live up there now.
Troy doesn't live up there anymore.
Yeah. I'm not sure how to even tell you how to figure out who, but you could call Troy Peterson. He could, he could tell you what, what ended up happening there.
Okay.
Okay.
And the other one, this?
It's, it's called Alcoa, a subdivision, and I'm just not sure who that is. I can tell you Mitch Poulson with the Regional Commission, contact him. He probably could tell you who the homeowners association president is. He usually tries to keep up on that.
Okay, perfect.
Our city offices might too, just because we provide water out there.
Through Garden City?
Yeah, that's, that's another good option.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, well, good luck to you. I hope you can figure that out.
We can too. It's getting expensive.
You seem like somebody who can figure it out. Just keep working on it.
You know, it's funny, I, I, yeah, work on a lot of different developments all over. And this one just, every once in a while you hit a snag, so. Well, actually, you hit a snag on all of them.
All right.
How'd your caucus go last night?
Oh, you know, smooth as what it did on the Los Angeles front from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, news last night, boy, they painted a pretty gloomy picture.
KSL was sitting the hardest point in what a, what a bad situation.
I don't, they, maybe they'll have to have a, a week of voting. There's too many people.
Well, that's what they were saying, is they had so many people show up that they've never had before, that the system kept crashing.
Well, they had, you know, they had the pre-registering issue of the system crashing and then they had lines of doing it in person and, you know, it was just one thing after another.
Yeah, Judy Garcia, we gotta try to make one the way down, but by the time I got there, they got home.
Didn't take us too long.
So it was, it was interesting getting a lot of calls. I'm wondering if that usually aligns with the clerk's office being open during caucus so that they'd be calling. We were open and they were calling us for voter ID numbers all night, actually, so.
That's because you had to have it to register and the system was down and you couldn't look it up. And ninety percent, even those who were registered in person needed their voter number. And so they had to access the system regardless of whether you were trying to pre-register or you were actually doing it in person to get your voter number, so.
And people showed up, some of the older people didn't have phones, they didn't have the access on phones, they didn't have the.
Well, we tried, I, I and California tried calling the GOP headquarters and tried to get some help and nothing, I mean, nothing.
Everybody, everybody was pretty mad too.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of them went home without even voting.
Yeah.
Really? Oh, on the block over there.
Over there, yeah.
I guess you heard we got hacked. Yeah, we got a virus, ransomware got in, yeah, got into our server. Fortunately, we had a lot of safeguards in place and we don't think that we lost any. But let me just put it this way, a very small amount of data that can be, you know, recouped, not a significant amount. And we don't think that any of our information, our employee information, they were able to access that because the programs had their own encryption. And so we think as far as the data breach was very limited and none, none, no sensitive information we, at this point in time, we can determine was accessed.
In this case, I'm just gonna trust you.
Thursday night.
You're not gonna look at these?
Thursday, late after early evening.
Think I need to.
It was interesting, you know, it's just one of those things that you, you hope never happens, but it did, so. Fortunately, all the office machines, everybody was offline there, so they weren't, none of those were being able to be accessed at all. Everything that we lost was on the servers and that was just, like I said, it was very limited, small, small information. And it was more about, yeah, just systems more than anything.
I trust you.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we approve these exemptions. I'll finish looking at these as they've been scrutinized by our assessor's office, so.
I'll second that.
I'll second that. We approve the exemption, tax exemption as presented by our assessor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And Lisa, did you have those?
Did you get this sanitation contract?
And the bills? Didn't she give you a binder of bills?
Yeah, they're right here.
I didn't know that was Bart's trailer corp.
Okay, the first one's a copy of a lease agreement. Then we've got some quotes on the equipment and then a tax exempt form that they want us to fill out. So there's three copies for each to be to look at.
And we've already approved the grader, correct, in one meeting?
Yeah, we just need to approve the lease agreement.
Where we had on the scales for the landfill, if anybody heard anything?
Scales for the landfill, have anybody heard anything about that? Still waiting for them to be delivered, made and delivered.
So the lease agreement is this, um, for the road grader, it's a five-year lease. And the end of the lease, we will own it outright. The payments are ninety-four thousand dollars a year with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar down payment. With an interest of four.
That's good interest. Right now. You don't like these or not?
No, so the rate's five point nine nine, which is still good, it's in the, it's in the.
Other paper for the grader?
Yeah. Looks like there's options to pay it sooner if we want to. But we've already talked about this and discussed the numbers and everything in a previous commission meeting, so. I'm happy to make the motion that we just sign the lease and purchase this thing.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Uh, okay, which one?
The motions for the motor grader. This is the right one?
Yeah.
This is the right one, right? Four seventy-two.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion for uh, then a second to sign for the motor grader. Four hundred and seventy-two, seven oh four, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed, motion carries.
Annalise, which page do you actually need him to sign, is it this one?
There's a whole, there's a whole bunch here and um, we're gonna see if she can reprint it so that they're all.
I thought I was getting pranked.
Yeah, so um, we gotta, we gotta sign the payment schedule. And also.
How does get in here, do we need?
Yes, we gotta sign that, um, we got some tax exemption. Which. Um, that's just something Annalise will file, that's all she needs to do is just fill it out and file. This verifies for tax exempt. Okay, so we've approved these, um, still reviewing them. On that, do we have any other business we need to?
Uh expenditures.
John, start looking at those.
Yeah, I'm going through them.
Okay, you look at those and I'll continue to look at this.
I think we need to look at renting or leasing.
Yeah.
These two things.
So maybe you guys can answer this, do we, do we usually do refund checks when like insurance claims come from the ambulance? I thought that was all done through. The billing company. Are you there Bill? Is this type of stuff done to the billing company, like a refund check for the ambulance for an insurance claim? Or do we write those checks, because I've never seen it before. Doesn't JCI or whoever they are take care of all that stuff?
Well, what probably happened was is they, yes, JCI sends their billings out, but they pay us directly.
They pay Rich County, okay.
Yes, so probably they, they probably went ahead and paid that amount. And then their insurance actually probably paid again, and so we refunded the amount, I'm guessing.
That's my only question on that deal so far.
We can clarify that.
What do you guys think, miss Bill?
Yeah, so we have a refund on an ambulance payment. Um, and it said that the insurance had paid it. I'm guessing that probably the individual was billed. And then he turned it into his insurance and he probably paid the county and the insurance paid to them, so we refunded him back. Guess my, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think so, I was looking through JCI.
Guess the canyon was pretty bad last night, huh?
Yeah, it was pretty, I can tell we went over this morning.
I know this Brian, Will Mark posted this morning about that it was finally at seven o'clock, it was finally open.
Yeah, she was all about the, the things like that, she said it was pretty, pretty dicey after the summer. I was shocked to see all the snow we got.
It was wet, it was wet, snow. We got a couple inches over there that's not here, this last night.
Why, why did you do that?
Just to pile up more. I see everybody over there's caterpillar and plague cabin spots and stuff already and. Uh, brings back horrible memories.
Well, it's gonna turn on here next week and it's just gonna melt it all.
Still my pen. What's that?
Spring head already.
Yeah, Sunday, huh?
Uh, well, as soon as daylight savings changes, which is just Sunday, you know, it it it'll all get, be good, it'll all be good. You know, the days are gonna be longer and it'll be warm.
Need to go golfing after work.
Golfing, yeah, yeah, I probably ought to do that once in my lifetime, just once in my lifetime. I ought to experience that once in his lifetime.
Yeah, I don't think.
I like driving ranges.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it once, do it somewhere warm, in California or something.
Phoenix?
Yeah, Phoenix would be good. Hawaii.
We used to go down there to Sweetwater. Church group and it was kind of fun.
Yeah, golfing's fun.
I'd love to see how far I can hit that sucker. Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, driving ranges, right, we went to uh.
Is there anything in the county, uh, does county have any sort of calling tree set up?
As far as what?
In case of an emergency.
Well, there's code red, if you signed up for that, you get a text message, um, and we encourage everybody to sign up for code red. Which is dispatched out of, well, the sheriff's department can dispatch it. Um, and Cache County can dispatch it as well.
When was that? Offered to people.
Oh, it's been.
I've never heard of anything of it.
Four or five years ago.
Each municipality can do it, we have code red in the city.
That's what, uh, why I ask is Dolores hit me up about it, because Lake Town's wondering. To get something in place and wondered if their county had something and.
We, we use it a lot for water system, you know, if a water system goes down. And that's, we use it a lot.
It's a text message, you have to subscribe and we, we sent out a, it's, well, it's probably before you were here. Um, but we sent out some information, I think we actually put it in our, in our sanitation bills for people to sign up. Basically, and what you did was is, is they you, you, they give you your cell number. You have your cell number and um, anytime, like in flooding over in Garden City. Um, you know, those people up there that don't live there, they can give Garden City their, their cellphone number. And when they do a code red that the city has got flooding going on, they get a text message. So there is that.
Does it, like if you had a. Water leak out in Pickleville somewhere and it was flooding some of the homes and stuff. Do the ones just involved get a text or does a, all of Garden City?
It would go out to everybody.
It goes to everybody.
It would have to go out there. But, but if that was the case, they would just look up, would be affected by it, so you could just call those individuals. We'd use that code red quite a bit.
Yeah, you do.
Flooding for water, for roads, for.
Freezing temperatures, because I get it too, because I'm registered business there.
Yeah, well, if you're putting all the temperatures are gonna be a hole for a longevity of time.
Please let your water run.
Let your water run.
And I don't, you know, I don't know, well, I don't know, we need to talk to Emily, I don't know whether. Whether your numbers overlap with our numbers or not, because I'm guessing you guys are probably getting numbers all the time. With people signing up and I don't know whether that would overlap into the sheriff's office or not.
We should see if we can connect that sometime to where.
We need to find that out.
For emergency services purposes.
Absolutely, yeah, we need to find that out.
I'll have uh, I'll have Kathy, you guys, just to check in for that. See what, see what that will take, if that's even possible.
You said Dolores was asking you?
Yeah, Lake Town's looking into it.
Have her call, have her call Kathy.
Okay. I know this.
The school.
The school does it too.
School does it too, when they're.
He says that, or Dale said that. They have their own little.
They do, they have their own app, yeah.
Well, yeah, and it's.
To the school out?
Yeah, it goes to all the parents.
Right, it's the same thing, I mean, that's what I'm saying, the school has a, their own information system, but it's. It's a, it's a different app that they've got, it's not a code red.
So we need to get the, that guy up here and me. Seeing June and Will and Dale on. Lease them.
Oh, this thing, this stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we won't have to buy it at all.
Or you can see with like what a, a zero down would be, like a five year, it's really not that, we're spending that much on repairs.
Yeah.
For sure. But if we didn't have to put that down, that'd be nice. Okay, that's perfect. I wish I could get a paper like this for every question I had. Okay, uh, Bill, did you have a chance to keep looking at these for you?
I just, yeah. Okay, I've moved, we approved the signatures um, for February.
Second.
Okay, motion to move and. Approve the expenditures, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And with that, that looks like that's our last item, I'd make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
And second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed, motion carries unanimously.